Good evening. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Pin and Pin School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551. Y'all please join me now in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
I honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. If you please remain standing at this time, Pastor Bill Moore from Bastrop, First Assembly of the God, will offer an opening prayer for us this evening.
Thank you all. By the God in the name of Jesus, Lord, we just thank you for today. Lord, I thank you for this council, Lord, the board, and the moms and dads and the kiddos, Lord, the young adults. And Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for the teachers and every staff member, Lord, and we just ask, Lord, to give them wisdom and knowledge and direction by your Spirit, Father. And Lord, we just ask, Lord, for your protection over this school system, Lord. Lord, let no harm come to the students or the teachers or staff. And Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for your protection and your wisdom. And Lord, we just thank you, Lord, for giving teachers able to deal with challenging students, Lord, and challenging parents. And Lord, we just thank you, Lord, that situations will be disarmed. And Lord, that you'll get all the praise and glory and honor, Father. And Lord, let everything said and done here today give you all the glory and honor in the name of Jesus. Amen.
You going to do some speaker, isn't it?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Tonight, we have our student speaker on our Character Education trait for November, which is compassion. I'd like to invite Skylar Legay. Love the last name. Come on up, Skylar, please. She's a sophomore, a 10th grader at the Colorado River Collegiate Academy. Skylar enjoys reading, spending time with her four dogs, watching movies with her family, volunteering with her friends for the Circa Spirit Committee and the Student Council. Her favorite subjects are algebra, two. Well done. And her career interests are aquatic sciences and biology. Skylar's goal is to become either a marine biologist or an aquatic vegetarian. I know it says veterinarian, Skylar. She also has two fish tanks and another tank, which houses a large hermit crab. You have very kind parents. Skylar, talk to us about compassion.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Skylar Legay, and I am a sophomore in the 10th Circa. Today, I'm speaking on the value of compassion, which everyone can relate to in one way or another. Whether it be making connections with those around us or simply complimenting a friend, we have all experienced the act. Have you ever wondered what our world would be like without kindness or understanding? Would there even be a world left without some kind of humanity? Compassion is one of the most crucial acts embedded in human nature and motivates the world to go around. Humans seek validation through empathy and compassion, rationalizing by bestrag to achieve that incentive. Without that motivation, many isolate or dissociate since they don't receive the emotional connection humans need to thrive. The world would unquestionably be less colorful if everyone kept to themselves, proving why compassion is significant by enabling the ability to bond with others. Even having a conversation with a newcomer at school or work could make that person's day since someone took the time to talk to them. Practicing compassion for others isn't very demanding when it's just taking the time to either help or sympathize to relieve some of their difficulties. The mental toll our community went through during COVID called for a vast amount of benevolence. From personal experience, COVID impacted students greatly. It's not surprising. My first high school year of midterms and finals were stressful. My mental health was in a scrambled state, and the lack of sleep wasn't improving the situation, leading to burnout. My concerned friends saw and showed some compassion by helping me study during our lunch and tutorial periods until I felt ready to ace my exams. You never know what a person is going through, and for that very reason, the practice of compassion can go a long way. Compassion can alleviate a great deal of mental suffering that takes a toll on all of us at one time or another and teaches us what it takes to maintain a healthy frame of mind. The value can even make us thrive as a population. So if deprived of it, where would our society be?
We have a small token of appreciation for preparing and imparting your wisdom on us. Thank you so much, Skylar. Well done. Also this evening, we have some of our superintendent student advisory committee members here, and I'm going to have them introduce themselves and their grade level and maybe the university or what they plan to study in the future. And I'm going to go ahead and Marley, if you would kick us off.
Hi, my name is Marley Henninger. I'm a senior at Colorado River Collegiate Academy. I plan on studying nursing at the University of Mary Harden Baylor.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Coriana Dexter. I go to Circa, and I'm in 9th grade.
And you haven't figured it out yet? Just a freshman. It's okay. There's nothing wrong with that.
Your turn.
Jonathan?
My name is Anthony Dugan. I play on the criminal justice route at San Luis Cenote.
At Circa as well. Okay. Boy, we're represented by Circa tonight. Welcome, y'all.
Indeed. We'll move now to the recognitions and special presentations. And first, we'll have Bastrop High School marching band, UIL Region 18, area marching. Mr. Portillo is our presenter tonight.
She's bench hitting first.
That's not, that's not Chico Portillo. So, no. Mr. Gilbert is actually with our region band competing. So we have Assistant Director Jeffrey Gutierrez, who's going to tell us about Bastrop High School marching band.
Awesome. Good afternoon, everybody. Many of you might not know who I am. My name is Jeffrey Gutierrez. I'm the new Assistant Band Director at Bastrop High School. And I am joined here by our, by two of our three amazing drum majors, Sadie Lord and Harley Martin. Harley is currently holding our UIL trophy for getting sweepstakes. But yes, our third drum major, Jeffrey Bain, along with another student named Cooper Cervantes, is, they made the all state, the all region, sorry, all region jazz band. So they're actually in Austin right now, getting ready for a concert tonight with Mr. Gilbert. And let me just tell you that our marching season has been quite a journey. We've taught our students that if you work hard, great things happen, and mountains will be moved. And man, they honestly did move those mountains this season. We advanced to finals for the very first time at the Capital City Marching Contest in Austin and finished sixth place, only eight points behind a three-way tie. And at the end of that night, our color guard came out with the, with the award of Best Color Guard Award. In addition to that, we also received our seventh consecutive sweepstakes at the UILs, at the region UIL State Contest, which is the trophy that Harley Martin is holding right now, which has also allowed us to advance to the area marching contest for the fourth consecutive time. There are many people whom Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Carley, our other assistant, Mrs. Gilbert, our color guard director, and I like to thank. First of all, we'd like to thank our students for their hard work, their drive and determination to make great moments with their art in the marching band. As you all might know, getting up at 7:00 a.m. every day and practicing in the Texas heat is not easy, but they do it with great maturity and strive to be better every day. They are honestly the reason of why we come to work every day. We'd also like to thank our Director of Fine Arts, Mr. Portillo, for all of his support and for being such a wonderful mentor to all of us directors at BHS. Thank you for coming out to our rehearsals and helping our kids get to that next level of excellence when you're available to. We'd also like to thank our Superintendent, Mr. Edwards. Thank you for all of your support in the band, in band and in music and just in fine arts in general. With you leading our district of BIS, we directors come to work every day knowing that our art and music is being supported by you and our community. And last and certainly not least, we'd like to thank our Principal, Mrs. Gabriel. From day one, you have supported us, and you have done so much for our band program at BHS that we could not have done any of this without your help. I personally would like to thank the board and everybody here tonight for just all of y'all's support in the band and in fine arts, because I personally know that it takes a village to do something great, and that is what our district is, is great. And that's what it'll be for years to come. And thank you all so much. Go Bears!
Could not resist.
Couldn't resist it.
Next, we have Bastrop High School Tennis Recognition, Elliot Allen.
Good evening. I'm Coach Robert Artist of Bastrop High School Tennis. Want to thank you all for your service and for recognizing the tennis team tonight. These young men and women that you see back here have just completed their fall team tennis season. If you're not familiar with the sport, well, we have, we have two seasons. We have a fall season, that's team tennis, and a spring individual tennis season. And the team tennis is a very unique sport in the UIL. It's actually the only sport where boys and the girls actually score together. And even in mixed doubles, they actually play together. These kids have, they really, really worked hard this summer. Starting the second week in June, they started coming up here at 6:30 every morning. Their parents started bringing them up here also. I should mention them. And the, you know, they, they worked hard. They worked, they worked four or five days a week, worked all summer. And then, beginning in August, we kicked off the season. They, we had a very successful season. We, we actually ended up in a tougher district this year than we were last year. We picked up, we lost twice, but we picked up the two Georgetown schools, so it got a little bit harder. But we placed two places higher. The kids medaled. We ended up getting third in district. And then, we took on McCallum in the first round of the playoffs and defeated them. And so, the team tennis for Bastrop High this year were by district champions. And again, we want to thank you guys for your support, and thanks to Ms. Gabriel and Coach Greedle and Coach Allen for everything they've done for us. And we look forward to hopefully doing, have more success in the future. Thank you.
Cedar Creek High School Cross Country. That's Mr. Allen.
Yeah, I was supposed to introduce Coach Artist, but he's a lot faster than I am. So certainly proud of the Bastrop program and the things they've accomplished with their tennis team. At this time, I want to introduce the, our Assistant Cross Country Coach at Cedar Creek, Coach Angela Love. We had several runners advance to the regional competition, and we want to recognize them.
Good evening, everyone. Our Cedar Creek High School Cross Country athletes did a phenomenal job during the cross-country season. Each week, they brought back awards to the campus from individual medals to team trophies. They worked extremely hard throughout the entire season. If you drove past the Cedar Creek Campus early in the morning, you may have caught them or caught a glimpse of them during their workouts. We had many accomplishments throughout the season, and we ended the season with two athletes, Paisley Smith and Alejandro Ruiz. They advanced to regionals. So Alejandro placed 44th out of 173 runners, and Paisley placed 62nd out of 179 runners. We are very proud of their hard work and proud of the team. And we've had a great season, and we really look forward to next year as well. Of course, we want to thank all of the parents for making sure their athletes got to practice early in the morning and showing up at all of the meets and definitely giving thanks to Coach Thomas and Coach Allen and Mrs. Stagman. She showed up at district, so we were happy to see her there. But we're really proud of them, and Paisley is also our Athlete of the Month. And give her a hand. I'd like to add a little bit, that's not a part of my notes, but they're very dedicated, very disciplined, and they're a wonderful group of young people, very kind, respectful. And I enjoyed working with them this season and very thankful for Coach Pooh's having me onboard. So congratulations.
Mr. Moore, before we move on, I do want to introduce, I have two more students here from our SSAC. We're going to let them introduce themselves right off the bat. Come, Marley, and you can grab the mic.
I'm Pusano. I'm in SSAC. I, I'm in Cedar Creek. Yeah. Where do I want to go to school? I don't know. I have no idea.
I'm Kaylee Martinez, and I go to Cedar Creek High School, and I hope to go to UT at Austin.
Thank you. Now we move to open forum. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone that has signed up and wishes to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so at this time. The board asks that comments pertaining to public education. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issue that is not posted on the agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion of the issue until the appropriate time during the meeting. At no time will board entertain questions from the audience and ask that all audience be respectful of other speakers and presenters. The board will not allow the use of any derogatory comments towards individual staff members, teachers, or board members. The board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents may be heard in accordance with policies FNG Legal and FNP Local. We'll be taking the speakers tonight in the order which the requests were received. We have allowed 30 minutes for open forum, therefore, we have two speakers, and each will be allowed three minutes to speak. Our first speaker tonight is James Louie.
Thank you. Hello, my name is James Louie. I'm the Computer Science and Cybersecurity Teacher at Cedar Creek High School. First, a little about me. I advocated for and started the Computer Science and Cybersecurity Pathway at CCHS three years ago. This year, I introduced certifications for the cybersecurity students in CompTIA A+ and CompTIA Network+ I co-founded the Cedar Creek High School First Tech Challenge Robotics Program seven years ago. I received a BEF grant last spring and was able to purchase 12 Lego robotic systems so I can start developing robotics programs at the elementary and intermediate level. I started the esports team three years ago, and one of our teams made it to High School Esports League Nationals. I started the cyber patriot program three years ago at CCHS, and I'm excited to say that we have three teams this year with 18 students, with most of them being girls. This year, I'm mentoring three CTE teachers and one fine arts teacher. I easily spend about 59 hours per week, Monday through Saturday, at CCHS. It is not difficult to see that I enjoy my job, love the relationships that I have with my students, and highly respect my CCHS administration team. I've had a great experience at CCHS these past years. Even though I do not consider education as a customer service business, it actually is. The reason that I'm here today is because as of Tuesday, November 2nd, I'm no longer happy working in Bastrop ISD. The reason I'm not happy is because on Tuesday, November 2nd, the Service Center and IT Department failed in its customer service to meet a teacher. They did this through the IT Department changing user permissions related to theme and desktop image control and other settings. They did this during the school year and without any feedback from the stakeholders or customers, that being teachers. The change that irked me the most was the loss of control of the desktop image. While the other changes that IT did do not affect me as much, I have heard complaints that they have been detrimental in the classroom. This includes teachers, while interacting with students, often return to their laptops and it is locked. This is because teachers no longer have the ability to control their timeout settings. They have been changed to 15 minutes. This is especially frustrating because after logging back in, the laptop has lost the Wi-Fi connection, and it has to be rebooted. Without getting too deep into my communication with the IT Department, I have had several email exchanges with IT staff in a Google Meet. All of this has been to no avail. Their focus was on branding and cybersecurity. The desktop background is not a cybersecurity issue. The district should focus their logo branding on the login screen, lock screen, and save screen. Ironically, to date, the login screen and lock screen continue to be the default Windows screen. While I do not consider myself the Lorax who speaks for the truffula trees, it appears that I am. I stand here with the emotional support from over 60 faculty and staff members at CCHS that they are also upset about this. I also have heard from staff at the Service Center, IT, BHS, Circa, CCMS, BES, CCE, and other campuses. Why is employee happiness important? A human resources expert will tell you that it is cheaper to keep current employees happy in comparison to having to find, interview, train, and then keep a new employee happy, especially today when there have been several teaching positions in Bastrop ISD open since this summer. In closing, my fellow teachers and myself are not happy. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening will be Deanna Bodine.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me this time. For those of you who do not know me, my name's Deanna Bodine. I've been with the district for 29 years. And I am here based on an SEL lesson where we were teaching the students to be self-assertive. I have been dealing with a leak in my classroom for six and a half years. I have sent over 30 emails to what I believe is my chain of command. I have shared photos and videos. I have shared or put in maintenance summer requests. And I have personally made minor repairs, such as taking care of the paint when that was not maintained per request, spending my personal money and my time to do this. I've also personally extracted the water using the machine that is on campus. I have rearranged my classroom to prevent damage to school instruments and equipment, which also, of course, allows for easier cleanup of the carpet. I have also tried to reduce the growth that has occurred on the carpet behind posters by not putting posters on that wall. Besides the damage that this is causing from the ceiling, it has also taken away time for me to teach, for me to prep for my students, and it interrupts and disrupts the lesson that occurs when they have to come out and change the tiles. This past May, I submitted a request to get the carpet pulled up and put tile down and area rug so that way the cleanup would be easier. And also, the health area would be easier because I don't believe it's good for my health to be breathing in what's underneath that carpet based on the water that I've poured out, and I definitely don't think it's good for the students. Of course, once I submit my emails, I don't know where they go. So I don't know where the blockage is of the emails. Repairs have been made, and I do want to acknowledge that. There have been improvements, but it weighs over time, and then the problem is back. This has been going on since the spring of 2016. There was a nice about two-year break. It got really bad, and then it got better. My biggest concern, besides it taking up time, is the health of mine and the students. There's this smell in the room. Going through the chain of command, I have put together a letter. I shared it with my principal and Mr. Portillo, and he asked me to send it to Bill Henson this week. He has shared with me what has happened behind the scenes. I will be sharing that letter with you via an email so that you can see the pictures of my classroom. And of course, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. If you want to see more videos of the fabulous water, I would be happy to share them with you. Thank you for your time.
We now move to the public hearing on the 2022 School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, the first rating system based on 2020, 2021 data. Ms. Edgar?
Good evening, President Moore, Mr. Edwards, and Board of Trustees. This evening, I'll be presenting results of the 19th Annual School First Report. And since this is a public hearing, citizens will have an opportunity to speak at the conclusion. For ease of delivery, I broke the presentation down into three sections. First, I'll provide a brief overview of what School First is. Then we'll take a look at Bastrop ISD's results, and then we'll review disclosures required by the Texas Education Agency. So School First is essentially a report card of the district's financial condition. First is an acronym for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. It was developed by TEA in 1999 and then put into practice beginning in fiscal year '02. The report always lacks a year behind, so the results I'm presenting to you this evening are based on fiscal year 2021. We're currently, again, in our 19th year of School First reporting, and we have received the highest possible score for all consecutive years with the exception of one year. There are 20 indicators for rating year 2022, which can be broken down into three categories that measure critical financial components, financial solvency, and financial competency. The indicators are rated a little differently, where questions one through five are yes-or-no answers with no points assigned, and then questions six through 20 are up to five or 10 points each for a maximum score of 100. The scoring rubric then determines the status assigned to the district, which is a letter grade of A through F. According to School First regulations, the district is required to have a public hearing each year within 60 days of TA's release of the financial ratings, as well as issue an annual financial management report, which can be found on the Business Services webpage under a section labeled Financial Accountability. A copy of this report has been included in your packet, and it is also available this evening to the public. Okay, so let's take a look at some results. We are required to present results on all 20 indicators, but tonight, I'll be highlighting a few in each of the three categories. So beginning with the critical indicators, question, questions one and two are asking about our annual external audit to ensure the annual financial report was submitted to TEA on time and that we received a clean audit with no instances of material weakness. Indicator three relates to debt service payments, ensuring that we did not default on a debt payment. Number four confirms timely payments to government agencies. And number five is looking at our statement of net position, which has not been included in the past several years. Question seven is a financial solvency indicator that measures how long in days after the end of the fiscal year the school district could have dispersed funds without receiving new revenue. So a perfect score would be 90 days, and we're at 63 days. That resulted in a loss of four points. Indicator eight measures current assets over current liabilities to determine if the district could cover its short-term debt. To score a perfect 10, the ratio had to be greater than or equal to 3%, and we scored, our ratio was 3.1%. Last year, we were just under 3%, and we lost two points on that one. So this year, we got the full. Question 13, still under solvency, is looking at the percentage of budget spent on administration. So this is a central admin ratio. A perfect score is less than 8.55%, and we scored 5.4%, which is well below the threshold, meaning that we are not top-heavy with central admin. The last five questions are related to competency measures. And indicator 16 is questioning the accuracy of our PIMS data submission versus what we reported in our annual financial report. The allowable variance is less than 3%, and we had a 0% variance. Question 18 refers back to the annual financial report, looking for instances of material in compliance with laws related to local, state, or federal funds. And finally, indicator 20 ensures the board was presented property values 120 days prior to the budget adoption. So based on these 20 indicators, Bastrop ISD scored 96 points out of 100. Okay. This last section brings us to the required disclosures. The district needs to disclose any gifts received from a vendor over $250 and any business transactions a board member or superintendent may have engaged in with the district. There have been no gifts and no transactions. Additionally, we must provide information related to the superintendent's income. The superintendent's contract is available in the annual financial management report located on the website. And there were no additional income received during the 2021 fiscal year outside of Bastrop ISD. And finally, we're required to show reimbursements by board member and superintendent. In 2021, we are required to pay for all of the fees paid by the board members. In 2021, there was very little activity, and all activity related to registration fees associated with a conference. And then this last slide concludes the School First presentation with a superior rating, a score of ninety-six, and a letter grade of NA. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
This is open to the public as well. This is a public hearing. I guess that'll do. Thank you. Up, sir. There's one.
Is there an estimate related to coming up to be having the ninety-eight surplus? Is there an estimate what it's like to be down a year? Will it be fifteen, fifteen, or more?
We will be there soon. Actually, and our audit report is this evening, and I think we'll touch a little bit on that. Thank you.
Good question.
Any others? Thank you very much, Ms. Edgar. Next, we go to Superintendent's Report. First one is Curriculum Report, Bilingual ESL Program Update. It's Patricia Flores, Director of Multilingual Programs. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Board and Mr. Edwards. It's definitely a pleasure to be here with you this evening and be able to share the multilingual annual report for the 2021-22 school year. As you know, Bastrop implements a transitional early exit bilingual program model in our schools. The language allocation plan provides for fifty percent of the instruction to be in English and fifty percent of the instruction to be in Spanish in our lower grades, with a gradual decrease of Spanish support in the subsequent grades. We also implement both of the state-approved ESL program models, which are content-based and pull-out. We offer content base at all of our elementaries and intermediates, and we offer pull-out services at all of our secondary schools. Over the course of the past year, we have seen about an eighteen percent growth in the number of identified emergent bilingual students in our district. So, about this time last year, we had about forty-one hundred students. Right now, we currently have over five thousand identified emergent bilingual students. One of the goals of all of our language programs is definitely for our students to be able to acquire English. In every spring, our students are assessed with Tell Pass, and the purpose of this assessment is to see how much English they're acquiring, the goal of that being one proficiency level per year. The state rates those levels as being beginning, intermediate, advanced, and advanced high. Now, I can say that for our district, some bright spots that we have for our students in K through second grade is that our students are definitely making the progress that we want them to make with their acquisition of English. You can see here that we have about thirty-three percent of those students as beginners, forty-six-point-seven as intermediate, and sixteen-point-four as advanced, and that is what we would traditionally expect for students who have been in schools probably three years or less. Now, if we look at that same group of, or we look at students moving into third through fifth grade, you can definitely see the shift here. We have significantly reduced the number of bilingual and beginning students. You have six-point-five percent there, and you notice the forty-one-point-three percent over in advanced. So, we definitely know that students in bilingual classes are making the progress that we want them to make in acquiring English. We can attest that through our biliteracy model that alternates the use of English and Spanish on an everyday basis, our teachers receiving the training that they need for our students to make those cross-linguistic connections. The next couple of slides have been prepared to show you how our students are performing on STAR assessments and also the EOCs. And while I know it's important for us to note that our emergent bilinguals are underperforming as compared to their monolingual peers, I want you to notice that over the course of the five years, their progress mirrors that of their monolingual peers, and in some areas, you can definitely see where we are going to make tremendous gains, and in some areas even started to close the gaps. So, here, looking at third through fourth grade, you can see the upward tick for both groups in math and reading, and look how close or how narrow those lines are getting over there in reading. For our fifth through sixth graders, you definitely can see that math, there is definitely a reduction in the gap there. Reading is also on an upward trend. If we look at students in seventh through eighth grade, again, you can see definitely that both groups, but it's nice to see that our emergent bilinguals are also moving up. Notice Algebra I, those lines have definitely come together, and so we can see that we're closing gaps in that area. If we look at our students in nine through twelve for those EOCs, again, notice the Algebra I, they're almost closing together, and then you can definitely see over in English II, look at the gains that we made from seventeen moving into twenty-two. So, it's really nice to see, like, I think even though this is for last year's report, it's still important for us to look at kind of the trajectory of our students over the course of the last five years, and you can see where there definitely are some gains that our students are making, both with their Tell Pass acquisition and then also with these particular assessments. So, every spring, we review that Tell Pass data, and we also review how our students are performing on those, on our state assessments. We use that information to be able to see whether or not students are going to meet the state reclassification criteria, and that would mean that students are no longer identified as emergent bilinguals. Now, I know you look at that number and you say, oh, that's only seven, and I know that's a very low number, but keep in mind that not all of our students completed the Tell Pass assessments last year. We had some students who didn't finish the writing samples. That's going to change this year because writing is actually embedded into the online platform. And also, note that we cannot reclassify students before the end of first grade. So, when you looked at those earlier Tell Pass pie graphs, those students really were over in elementary that are making that progress, and so we cannot reclassify students before the end of the first grade per the state. So, that is also something to take into consideration. Part of the work that the multilingual department does is be able to provide professional development to our teachers, and last year, we trained over a hundred teachers in a variety of different topics and subjects that are directly related to the work that we do with emergent bilinguals. We're especially proud of the work that we did with our paraprofessionals. In many instances, we know that these individuals were working as teachers in classrooms, and so we were able to provide them the training to be able to really lead strong small-group instruction, especially some intervention in our first-grade classrooms that was needed. We were able to really increase our parental involvement activities last year, including some things that were for the community, such as our community event, Dia del Niño. We had over two hundred families that were in participation that particular day. We also continue to partner with Community Action for our ESL and GED classes. We offer literacy events. We're especially proud of our Parenting Partners program that we have launched. We launched this at Bluebonnet Elementary last year. This is a photo of our first graduating class. Now, these parents come together for six weeks, and they're learning how to improve their parental skills. So, it's not just about come in and teach your child how to read, but it's about truly how do we improve our parental skills when working with our students. So, these parents will actually be the facilitators for new cohorts that we're going to offer at that campus this year. Due to the shortage of bilingual teachers, you know, that we have across the state, last year, we filed for seventy-one bilingual exceptions, which means that roughly we had over fifteen-hundred students who weren't receiving bilingual education. We had twenty-one ESL waivers. In an effort to try and reduce that, of course, we are working, my department works very closely with HR, being able to attend different job fairs, thinking about how we can recruit and retain our teachers. The district did also increase the stipend from six thousand to eight thousand last year, in addition to the $500 returning bonus that we offer our teachers. Our team grew last year. We were able to hire a translator-inter interpreter, which I think has been extremely beneficial to the district in being able to close some of the gaps where we had as far as being able to communicate to our families. We have noticed a substantial uptick in the participation of our families on campuses just because now we're able to offer someone who's able to bridge that language barrier. So, in addition to those things that are really more related to program pieces and are required by the state for me to come and report out to you, our team also engaged in a self-assessment to rate the district's program using those five different pillars that you see there, everything from our program model down to our family and community development. So, using those, our team last year was able to set some very substantial goals for what we wanted that work to look like, and I can honestly say that I give ourselves a checkmark in being able to meet those. I highlighted in yellow for you the English Language Proficiency Standards, which are the TEACs for language, because those are areas that I think as a district, we still need to continue to refine and work on. So, using those, moving into this school year, we are going to continue to focus on those, but what I did is I highlighted in yellow for you the areas where we're going to continue to refine those, because I think it's important for us to continue to tweak that work and be able to definitely move it forward. And I think that's going to definitely benefit our students. So, that is the annual report for last year. Are there any questions?
Yes, Ms. Flores, the parental class that was conducted, six-weeks class, are there goals to offer that at every elementary level?
That was one of the goals that we had for this year. We expanded it to three more elementary campuses. Emil started this fall, and we're adding Cedar Creek in the spring.
Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Flores, I also wanted to comment on that. That is such a wonderful way to bring parents in to school and see it as a community, so thank you for that. And then I just had a question I was curious about. You said that in literacy, they have been using a biliteracy model, so would you tell us more about that?
Yes, so in our biliteracy model, so as I mentioned earlier, we, in our lower grades, we offer a fifty-fifty framework, which means that the students are receiving fifty percent of their instruction in English and fifty percent in Spanish. So, we alternate a language of the day, which means one day is English, one day is Spanish. So, students are learning to read and write in both languages and being able to leverage them simultaneously for the acquisition of English.
The instruction in English during that time?
Oh, yes, ma'am. The entire day is in English.
The entire day is in English?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Let's see. Now, we move to the HB III Board Goals and Plans update. Ms. Amanda Brantley, Director of CCMR, and Jennifer Everly, Director of Early Literacy. Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah. Ms. Edwards, Board of Trustees, thank you for having us up here tonight. So, Jennifer and I are coming to present to you our annual update of the House Bill III Board Goals and Plans that we brought to you originally in 2020. So, this is our second year of update on these goals, which were for a five-year plan. All right. So, in CCMR, there are several indicators by which a student can meet college, career, or military readiness. You'll notice under military-ready, it says this is returning for graduates of this class, 2023 and beyond. For the last two years, this has not been included in our school accountability. So, now, once a student fully enlists in the Armed Forces or the State Guard, they'll submit a form to their counselor, which allows them to count toward our CCMR accountability. In career readiness, they've got the opportunity for an industry-based certification. You'll notice italicizes the word "and," that is also an update here. And what we expect to come forth from TEA in the next few weeks is that a student will need both their IBC as well as completion in a CT program of study. Our students have been on track for several years to be completers of programs of study with groundwork that's been laid over several decades in Bastrop ISD. For college-ready, that's meeting the Texas Success Initiative criteria for any of the prep exams, SAT, ACT, TSIA, or participating in a college prep course, or earning an associate's degree, as they would have the opportunity through CIRCA, completing dual credit, which is an opportunity at both comprehensive high schools, nine hours in any subject, or three hours in ELA or math, or completing an OnRamps course, which we look forward to offering in the near future here in Bastrop. In front of you are the percentage of students in the class of 2020 by indicator, which met CCMR. You've got where we were as of last week for our current class of 2023 and what our goal is. You'll notice that we are at or very close to meeting what our year-end goal was already here in the first semester, and we look forward to surpassing those marks next year. Again, this is just what I highlighted earlier, what we anticipate coming as a change in accountability for CCMR. Students must have an industry-based certification and be a completer of their program of study for career readiness. The list of IBCs has been updated. It's a little more broad, but a few things that we've done in the past have come off of that list, so we'll be working closely with our teachers and our campus principals to make sure that what we're offering really aligns to what workforce needs, as well as what goes toward our accountability. That's not to say that we would remove something because it came off the list. We believe if it's valuable for students, then it's valuable for students, and we will continue that. So, our plan continues. We're going to tailor our advising process to meet the needs of our individual students. We're going to look at what their post-secondary goals are, and we're going to help them achieve that, whether that's through college, career, military-ready. We do want our students to be prepared for both college and career, but give them the best advice so they can move forward into whatever is best for them. We have added SAT School Day at all of our campuses, and we have ACT opportunities for them to test on Saturdays at Bastrop High School. We are expanding our tutoring for TSIA, and we've also implemented the Texas College Bridge Course, which is a self-paced online course that students have faculty support during the school day to prepare for that TSIA test, which allows them to skip any remedial courses once they do enroll in college. We're continuing to expand our dual-credit courses through ACC, including our two P-Tech programs. We've got our first class at both BHS and CCHS. We've got twenty-three at Cedar Creek in the Manufacturing Academy, and thirty-six at BHS in the Health Science Academy, and look forward to seeing those students through. We've increased our student college visits. When we give our PSAT to our eleventh graders in the fall, all of our seniors go to a college visit, or they meet here at the PAC with industry folks based on what it is that they're choosing to do. We do have Career Academy at Bastrop High School through our Automotive Technology, where they'll earn a Level One certificate, which is the bulk of the workforce credit needed for an associate's degree, so they could easily go on to finish that associate's, or they can go directly into the workforce. And again, we're continuing to look at our industry-based certification opportunities, make sure they're aligned to high-wage and demand occupations, as well as our programs of study, so our students are best set up for their time after high school.
Good evening. We're here to review our early literacy and math proficiency plans, and moving into our goals that have been set for 2024, we're going to increase math and reading meets-level performance on STAR by twenty percent. Currently, our reading has increased by sixteen percent in the last two years, and math by twelve percent. Working towards these goals starts foundationally in pre-K. In front of you, you have the beginning-of-the-year benchmark scores for circle testing, which occurs three times a year in pre-K, next to our 2024 goals. And as you see there, we are working our way towards these goals, and if we are trending like we have been for the past two years, we're making on average ten percent growth between beginning and end of the year, which would put us at the end of this year well over our reading goal and making substantial gains towards our math goal. As we move into the Kinder through second assessment piece, I want to give some context around the data that you'll see. And one of the things, when you look at their M-class testing, it measures from beginning to end of the year, but a student's not only got to meet the level, but they've got to grow within the year, the average amount of growth that they'd expect a child that age to meet. So, for instance, in third grade, to be on grade level, you have to score a 330, and by the end of the year, you have to score a 441 to be on grade level. So, it does move, not only do they need to meet the standard, but they need to grow within the year in order to maintain that. Reading assessment is an assessment that we have used for the past, this is our second year to utilize it. Our math assessment works in the same way, and this is also our second year to utilize that one. Here is our, on this slide is our reading progression towards the 2024 goals. The two columns are the percentage of students performing at or above grade level on M-class assessment at the beginning and the end of the previous school year. We saw the largest gains in Kinder, which is also our group that was going through the Texas Reading Academy. They also made above-average growth compared to national norms. In third grade, we did see a one percent decrease, which means that forty-one percent of these students made the expected amount of growth that we would expect to see. They maintained through that. One potential reason for these could be the post-COVID impact. That is the grade level that did spend two foundational years, Kinder and first in remote learning, which could have an impact on these scores maintaining the way they are. Our math M-class goals. This chart shows again the progress from the beginning of the year to the end of the year last year compared to the goals. We saw the greatest gains again in kindergarten. We did see a decrease in second grade. When you look at these, though, this shows the on-grade level. We do have a high percent on We do have a high percent, almost 50% of our kids in the emergent category, meaning that they are on their way to performing on-grade level. Continuing with our strategies that we've already implemented, looking at pre-K through second district-like professional learning communities that are focused on using this data to impact the instruction that we're doing on a daily basis in the classroom, as well as looking at professional development specifically on small-group instruction and systematic phonics. And then providing embedded literacy training for all teachers and having that targeted feedback and observation and ensuring that all staff by the end of this year are trained on the Texas Reading Academies and how to implement that in their classrooms. And then as well as digging down deeper with our mass screener and data in order to help really get to the fundamental skills that our kids need.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have just one question. I have a couple, but you've answered them already. Our pre-K four teachers, is there an opportunity? Does the Texas Reading Academy cover pre-K?
It does not currently. There has been information that there may be something coming out for pre-K, but we, we will see as soon as we know, like you know.
But they do receive professional development through the school district and?
Yes, ma'am. We are required by the state to offer the 30 hours within the year for professional development for our pre-K teachers.
Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you very much. We now move to the financial report. Tonight, we have a report from Belt Harris Bahachik, LLP 2021-2022 Audit. And presenting tonight is Mr. Robert Bell.
Good evening. As always, it's an honor to present the results of the annual financial statement audit. Get out my glasses here. Very pleased to announce that the district received again an unmodified audit report, which was presented over on page 11. This is the highest level assurance we can provide to the board that all the disclosures required by general accepted accounting principles have been included and the financial statements are materially correct. Of course, that audit is prepared in accordance with the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants auditing standards. And there are also two additional reports in the very back of the report. The first is on the Government Accounting Offices Government Auditing Standards, in which there were no findings with that audit. And also on the Government Accounting Offices auditing standards for the single audit. And again, there were no findings on the single audit, which covers the federal audit, federal, federal, sorry, the federal funding that the district received. There are also two supplemental reports, bound documents that will maybe in your bound report. The first is called the Required Auditor Disclosure Letter. That report is a lot thicker this year than it has been in years past. It now encompasses two letters that we're required to put within that document. This letter just talks about the audit process itself. And all the language within that letter is the boiler, standard boilerplate language, so I'll, I'll get a little bit of a spoiler alert. There's really nothing noteworthy to report within that letter as well. There's also a management letter. The management letter is generally reserved for areas of non-compliance or internal controls, things of that nature. There were none of those findings with the audit. So, again, that is great news to receive. But there is one forward-looking comment, which has to do with subscription-based accounting rules. Again, this is an accounting issue, but it's also one of those things that takes lead time to address. So, we've formally gone on record to make sure that the district is aware of that new accounting standard that's coming up. So, all in all, that is great news you want to be receiving tonight. The report is prepared in accordance with, and it gets to all the professional standards, but also the TEA's requirements as well. So, we believe it meets all those requirements. And also, we're talking about the first rating indicator this evening. And there's nothing within this report that would prevent the district from receiving the first rating indicator for the next year as well. So, again, that is good news, good news to be receiving. And then, last but not least, the fund balance is always one of the primary things that the district is looking to see, is how did you do on fund balance? Very pleased that the district came in with a fund balance. It was in the 31% of your operating expenditure, so that is good news. We often talk about that and express that in terms of days of expenditures on hand. 30 days would be considered low. 60 days would be considered average. 90 days would be very good. And you came in 115 days. So, again, that's a very strong, healthy fund balance. And again, you should be commended for that, and it was trending, trending upwards. So, again, those were all positive signs. More than happy to entertain any questions the, the board may have.
When you say we have 115 days, it sounds like we have just a lot sitting there. But a lot of that is due to our growth as well and, and things we have budgeted going forward, too. It's not any negative indication that we have so much, is it?
Again, 30 days would be very, I'd be worried if you were 30 days. 60 days would be good, 90 days would be very good. And again, you're at 115 days, but, but that, but that is by no means in a war chest to be described. Again, things happen. And typically, there's an ebb and flow in all financial cycles. There's a high tide and a low tide, and you're, you're probably at a high-tide market. But, but I assure you, it will go down.
Well, you also got to remember we're growing, district as well. Expenditures are growing, payroll, you know, opening up two elementaries coming up, things like that. So, and this has been a goal, Mr. Edwards. We've been working on this for probably, what, about five to seven years, trying to get our fund balance to?
That's correct.
To, to this, this level. And so, and I know that we've been working very hard on that and appreciate the administration's efforts on that as well.
Thank you for all the good news. Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Bell. Let's see, here we go. Since we've just received an update on our 2021-2022 audit, I would like to pull action item number 5B and call for a motion to consider the approval of the annual audit report as presented at this time.
I'm moved to approve the 2021-2022 audit as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, the motion passes. Thank you. Next is Administrative Services and Human Resources Report for Information Only. Police Department Report is information only, and Operations Report is information only. Next is Communications Community Relations Report. The attendance zoning process, Dr. Kristy Lee.
Yes. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Edwards and Board of Trustees. Tonight, I am pleased here shortly to introduce to you Rocky Gardner with Zonda Home. He is coming to share with you an updated report on demographic trends, as well as a report on our proposed attendance boundaries. So, demographics are presented to the district twice per year, in the fall and in the spring. They consider lots of information when putting together this report, such as economic trends, new home sales, existing home sales, population growth, et cetera. They also work with local partners, such as the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, to gather information from that source as well. And then the district uses this information as we plan for staffing, programming at our schools, and for facilities. Now, as it relates to attendance boundaries, the current boundaries are drawn for six elementary schools. And as you'll see momentarily, when Rocky comes to present, he will show you new boundaries that will factor eight schools, because of course, this reflects the two new schools that are currently under construction. So, beginning in September, we have had a, we had a series of meetings between BISE leadership and Zonda, Rocky and his team, to consider the current and future attendance boundaries. We also held two larger group meetings that included campus principals and other district staff to create the draft that you will see. We also met with our folks from transportation so that we could include their feedback as our bus transportation partner. Our goal was to create new school boundaries that are balanced in terms of student population and to minimize disruption for families. So, the new boundaries that you'll see will take effect in the fall of 2023. So, what happens now? So, after tonight, we will make the boundary presentation available on the district website so that our staff and our families and the community can see. In addition, we will host two in-person town halls. One will be at Bastrop Middle School in the evening on November 30th. And the next night, we will host it at Cedar Creek High School, also in the evening. So, we hope that it will be convenient for families and staff. And then we'll come back to you after we take into consideration all of that feedback, see if there are any adjustments that we need to make in the boundaries. We will be taking a little bit deeper dive to make sure that all of the schools are balanced. And then we'll bring it back to you in January for your final approval. So, without further ado, I wanted to introduce you to Rocky Gardner with Zonda.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Edwards. It's a pleasure to be back in Bastrop. This is my first time in this building, and I can't lie that I had to have assistants getting here tonight. I went to the wrong spot, so. First, I'm going to go through the demographic report. And this demographic report, we actually compiled a bit early because we had to have it ready to begin the boundary process in early September. So, the data was collected kind of late summer, just, just to give you an idea of where we're at. At the time, our enrollment was 12,401, growth of about 400 students. Steady growth, not quite where we thought it would be. We had a couple anomalies. Kindergarten enrollment dropped off significantly. You can see there, I put the, at the bottom, what I call percentages, so a survival rate. And so, if you look at the kindergarten enrollment in 22, 23, that 94.6 survival rate, if you will, it's really a growth rate for kindergarten, survival for the other grades. We, that, that was a lot lower than we expected, but we, we might be seeing unfortunately, kind of a new trend, you know, in, in some stay-at-homes at kindergarten before they come to pre-K. As you can see, first-grade cohort's very large. That means they're coming back. We also had unusually large cohort at fifth grade, and I think that could have been the result of people that kept their student home for a couple of years because of COVID deciding not, not to just bring them back for their fifth-grade year. So, I think we'll see a, a much higher cohort at fifth grade next year. If we look at, did I do that? Okay. Unemployment rates right, right now, here's what's going on in the economy, right? Some people believe a recession's pending. Some think we're already in a recession. It's probably a little bit of both. And when we're seeing mixed signals, we're seeing unemployment rates at record lows, right? Below 5% is considered full employment. And when you drop down into threes and below 4%, that's full employment. And that means it's getting harder and harder to find someone to fill positions. And I think we're all seeing, we're seeing that right now. Now, could that shift in the coming years? Certainly. But the flip side of that is also that there's a couple of good things happening. I thought this was just interesting, this 204 Studios. That was kind of fun to think of, of what could happen there. They say it could create as many as 1,000 to 1,400 jobs over a six-year period. We've got over 700 construction jobs. They're going to be providing rentals, I think, to like Netflix and Hulu. I think they're going to build an office tower there. So, it's got, it's got an interesting component to it. So, that, that might, might be kind of fun. And if projections are right, it can add $2 billion, a $2 billion economic impact. And that's always a good thing as well. Opening the first phase maybe this coming August. And we also have the TSC Mechanical that might bring 150 jobs to the area. And of course, there's always SpaceX that could anticipate to bring 575 new jobs. And then we, then, then we transition from jobs to housing. This is a part that people are kind of curious about. Now, we built this again in late August. Average prices were still climbing in, in August, although interest rates had climbed, you know, significantly. You know, the total listings were up, were almost double where they were a year ago. So, that's the Austin-Round Rock area. Again, three months inventory, that's a very steady inventory. But it was very, very low a year ago, where you were basically selling your house as soon as you put it on, on the market, or you almost didn't have to. That's a pretty significant change. Homes sold, so this is based on deed transactions. So, what our team does, they, they collect all the deed transactions. So, that could be an existing home or a new home, and, and we see what that's done. In 2020 and 2021, significant numbers jumped up there to pushing 2,000. Now, right now, that, that was year-to-date in August, we were at 951. So, I still think you're probably going to finish the, the year around that 1,500 to 1,700 homes. Again, that's existing and new home sales. It's going to be interesting to watch what's going to happen because of interest rates. I, I saw something where about a $400,000 home, that house payment is $800 more now than what it was back in January. That, that's a big number. Now, a lot of people don't think, now, we've already seen some flattening in the Dallas-Fort Worth and Houston area. We haven't quite witnessed that in the Austin area. We haven't seen it flatten out yet. So, it'll be interesting to see where that goes. Price points might, might also be something that changes. Again, this year-to-date price, that, that's a big jump from 341,000 to 410,000 in 2022. Now, that was a partial year. That could come down slightly, but I still think you're going to finish over 400,000 with a new home average. And then your, your existing homes are right around the same area. So, significant changes in price points are real, are going to be something we keep an eye on. And of course, development. So, these are districts, there are 30 actively building subdivisions that our team's calling on. Like Ms. Lee said, we, we contact the city, we contact developers, the EDC. We're also, we have a new bird, we have an image system that has some real-time imaging because a lot of this is happening overnight. There's a strong manufactured housing component to Bastrop that's not always found in traditional methods. So, we're watching that as well. We know there's groundwork. That red outline means that there's groundwork. So, future vacant lots are now being developed in three subdivisions across. That just means more activity to come. I've got a few slides here, just to, to show you some activity that we saw back in August. The colony had 880 homes occupied at that time. They're doing 250 to 350 homes per year there. If they can continue that pace, you can see it stretches out. It's kind of a funny-shaped development there. I think it's kind of like an alligator head, but that's neither here nor there. West Bastrop Village, 1,500 total lots, so 1,400 future lots. They anticipate building about 100 homes a, a year. Those first lots were delivered the first quarter of last year. And so, we're seeing that, that updated aerial in September where those roads are in place there in that development. We've got Bastrop Grove with 291 vacant lots. They started 28 homes during the second quarter, so that, that would have been, you know, April, May, and June of this, of this year. They'd like to do 100 to 120 per year. Keep in mind, last year, I think they did 28 homes all year. So, they're really getting things cranked up. Double Eagle Ranch, we tried to put an updated aerial in there. It was a little bit of a cloudy day, but you, you can see that 50 vacant developed lots in there. They have equipment on site for 565 lots in phases four and five. That's a little bit higher price point, so 50 to 60 homes per year. And right now, that's the biggest challenge. We, we get inventory starting to climb because it's taken so long to close a home. And that's also on, on these new homes, the challenge for buyers, because when they start the home to when they finish the home, these interest rates have gone up 4% or 5%. And that's, you know, that's where we're keeping an eye out for cancellations. Los Almeidas Estates, 277 total lots. The first home started this, this summer. They're restricted to site-built and newer model homes. So, this will be newer model mobile homes. So, this will be a manufactured housing community for the most part, which means they can come pretty quick. They, they're not, it's going to take 30 to 90 days. They've got really high yields out there, too. So, we begin to see some pretty high yields in that area. And we have another, the Falcon subdivision, that, that plat was approved in September of 2020 with, with some initial groundwork that was underway back in July. And I know, only a couple more. Veridian PID approved in 2021. Developers targeting 250 to 300 homes. That's a D.R. Horton product. Once D.R. Horton starts, they kind of move pretty quick. They kind of move pretty quick. So, keep an eye on that one. And Bedroll Track, 804 total future lots, development agreement in July 2021. There's a preliminary plat. That's all we really know about it right, right now, but we, we know that's, that's coming. It could be some significant, pretty dense, pretty dense area out there. And then forecasted new homes. You can, we're forecasting just kind of staying, huh? It's not showing up on there, is it? Well, there should be little lines there, five of them. I don't know where that is, but we're forecasting staying around, right, right around, that's kind of a guess, I guess, right around 1,800 homes, you know, per year. That's multifamily, single-family that we think, and on top of that's closings. Keep in mind, that includes some existing stuff. So, through, through that, we forecasting now, we're forecasting next year's growth to be about 550 students, so a little bit more than this year. I think you're going to see a few more returners. We're also probably going to begin to really get a feel for what this new trend's going to look like. I think this was our first, you know, last year was supposed to be the bounce-back year. That didn't really happen. If you recall, we still saw some, in, in the state of Texas, we didn't bounce back from the 120,000 students that we lost statewide. the 120,000 students that we lost statewide. We only bounced back about 50. So we thought we got a little more of that this year, but not as much as. So what's happened is we've seen a new dynamic. I think trends have changed, and we're going to be kind of watching that to see what that new dynamic looks like. We're watching birth rates as well, which declined. We think we had 10,000 less births in 2020 in the state of Texas. So birth rates are declining. And Bassdrop, what's happened is we've watched the yield in Bassdrop stay right around that .5. So we say .5, it's basically five students for every 10 homes. Yields have been declining in Austin, in the Austin area, but we're not seeing that decline. I think families are coming out to Bassdrop, they're seeking that. Now, I came in on 71. That could be something that slows people down a little bit, right? They need to get that infrastructure figured out. But I got here on time, thanks to the blue and red lights and stuff. We got here. So we're looking at 550, and then we're seeing it pick up again, where you could be adding close to 1,000 students a year in six to seven years. Given the lots that you have out there, the vacant land, this is all, this is all the, it's kind of not, you say it all the time, right? It's not if, it's when. But that really is what's going to happen. We're going to have some cycles, recession-type cycles, some hiccups. But right now, I think we're on trend to be over 15,000 students within five years. Have this at the campus level, and we're about to talk a little bit about boundaries. The numbers that you see here now are through fifth grade. So I've added the fifth grade at each one of these campuses if they were there right now, okay? Just to give you an idea what these campuses would look like without schools seven and eight. We've got your Bassdrop intermediate. Those numbers there, that's just sixth grade, okay? For those first couple of years. And then the middle school there is seventh and eighth only for those first couple of years, just to give you that idea while we move on. So we grew by more than 400 students this fall. Home sales in Bassdrop, we think you could do about 1,800 home closings. So again, that's not all new housing, it's all housing. We have groundwork underway for 985 lots. That is single-family lots. So that's groundwork for single-family lots. We'll add 1,200 to 1,600 new residential units annually. That's the part that didn't show up, you know, that blank spot. That's that 1,200 to 1,600. And then we're forecasting enroll over 15,000 students in five years, be pushing 20,000 students in Bassdrop ISD in 10 years. I don't know, that sounds, 20,000, that's a lot of students, right? Get ready for it. Before I move on to talk about the boundary work that we've been doing for the last couple of months, any questions related to the demographic report? All right. Well, it's been a fun ride, though. You know, we started this in September. Yeah, I think Bassdrop was the first. We've done, we're doing about 20 boundary projects right now, our company is. And I think this was, this kind of kicked off my fall here in Bassdrop. So we've worked with the team. You're going to see a plan, but keep in mind, there are many iterations as we work through this. We come up with an idea, we'd move things around. We have a software that can kind of move things on the fly and show the results of that. So that worked out very well. So this is going to be kind of small to look at right now, but I want to give you an idea what you're looking at. This is seven and eight. Eight is in yellow, seven is in brown. The red outlines are your current attendance zones. So if you want to see an area that shifted, look where it crosses, where color crosses a red line. And I'm going to zoom in a little bit, so you get a little bit better idea on each one of these. For elementary seven, you can see the star there. It's actually at the end of the bottom mouth of the alligator, if you could draw that line there, where elementary seven sits. So the majority of elementary seven, you can see there that we pulled a lot of that from Mina, right? I get them mixed up some days. And then we had a big chunk from Bluebonnet. And I'm going to zoom in on both of those. Here's the chunk that we, this is the Bluebonnet area, all the Colony area is been moved in number seven. You can see State Highway 21, we use that. We try to keep things as clean as possible. When we're doing boundary work, we try not to split streets. We don't want students on both sides, you know, opposite sides of streets going to opposite campuses where possible, unless it's a significant street. Or we'll use the back of an ownership parcel. Maybe we'll use some infrastructure, but as best we can, we don't want a lot of movement there. And then I think elementary, then we had to make, now, keep in mind that we freed up capacity. So we took a lot of students out of Mina. So that meant we had opportunities to move from Emile to Mina. You can see that blue area there, that was previously in Emile, is now being moved to Mina. And then we had some area that moved from Emile to Lost Pines out there on the north side. And I had some names, I was supposed to, didn't keep my, didn't keep my page going here. And I can give you some of those subdivision names there before we. So like, if I back up here, just to get, just for context, this includes all of the Woodlands, the Colony, Hunter's Crossing, and Riverside Grove, okay? Is all part of that group that we looked at there. There we go. And then, of course, this is the Colony. You get a pretty good idea with those road names there. Now, this is the community of Page that we've moved from Emile to Lost Pines out there on the far north. That's your elementary seven boundaries. Now, elementary eight, it looks small, doesn't it? It is very dense out there. It's a very dense area. So most of elementary eight was taken there from the Cedar Creek Zone. We went across the street and picked up a couple of streets there that just have an easy feeder. And so we brought those out of Red Rock and moved them into elementary eight there. We did the best we could. Again, we met with transportation every chance we could to let them see kind of those transportation flows. And we moved a little bit there. You can see that little notch that was part of Red Rock. We moved that into Cedar Creek, too, as part of this change. So I'm going to go on and just look at some numbers, and we can back up and talk about this here in just a couple of minutes. I want to show the first set of numbers here. These are what a grade report, we looked at this while we were going, just to get an idea of what things would look like if it was in place today. Because the way our system is set up, we map the students where they live. And so when we draw this boundary, we can show, okay, based on where today's students are, what would it look like if this was in place today with the '22, '23 enrollment? So keep in mind, this isn't a forecast. This is the way it would look today. You can see those capacities there. And we also included the utilization, so that's the percent of capacity, you know, when we're using capacity there. It would, currently, they would all be at, you'd see some at 90% capacity, right? And then we have economically disadvantaged distribution there as well. With that, the forecast. So the forecast is where things can get messy. We've put a chart on here that talks, you know, the red is bad. Let's just look at it that way. Red is bad, yellow is getting very tight, orange is just over, and then red is kind of way over. What we've done, we haven't fixed, I mean, your overall capacity is 6,600. So within three years, you're already going to be back at overall capacity. That's with these two campuses. So we've done the best we could to bring these down to where they were manageable until we can, you know, till that next opportunity to open a campuses. So you can see by '26, '27, we're definitely going to be over your current capacity with all eight campuses, with your elementary growing to, you know, close to 9,400 students within 10 years. I talked fast. I'm happy to take questions. Talk more, whatever I can do. Wow. As a demographer, I'd love to do that. I don't ever get to talk.
Map going to be drawn up to be presented online. Are they going to be able to like, get in, zoom into those areas to see what?
For now, what we have is just the presentation. But I don't think, but what our team is going to do is we're going to create a large PDF map, if you will, that can be put online. And what we do is we create the map to be 48 by 48, if you plotted it. But that allows for someone to zoom in. So that'll be our next step for our team to do, provide that to the district to put on the website. And then we can decide how we want to present it when we do the public presentations as well.
And administration will work really hard to make sure that we identify everyone that's affected so that we can reach out to them. Because many people will think they're affected, but they won't be, you know? So anywhere you saw that color change across the red line, we'll target those areas to speak to them, so that, you know?
For our future phone calls, how many areas are there? Is that very?
How many students? Can you tell us how many students?
You know, they're.
Is it spread out pretty good, or?
Well, it's.
Go back to the big one.
So you can see where color passes over, and I don't know, this red line. Yeah, there you go. So you have, I think, you know, you're going to see some areas that are moving but aren't moving to a new campus, you know, from Red Rock to Cedar Creek, you know, the Mina part going to Lost Pines. That, you know, I think a lot of people won't be surprised by this. You know, they're going to be, their expectation probably was to attend this, you know, in some of these areas. But there are a couple where they're moving campuses. And I think we need to make it very clear that we're just changing elementary boundaries. And that's one thing that, you know, we'll have to be very clear message to send. We're not going to change any other boundaries at this point.
Balanced schools. In most cases, we've shortened their commute to their school. So I think there's a lot of good in this. And when you go to the last slide, you'll see that for two years, I mean, for year for this next year, we've eliminated overages. That's why this next bond that we're talking about right now, if we can get it passed in '23, we do design in '24, '25, and then open the following year. And then we're right back on top of our, almost catching up, actually, getting ahead of our elementary enrollment. So we'd have 10 elementary schools. And yes, we're still breathing.
Yeah. It's been a pleasure to work with the team. It's been good.
Well, thank you for your work. This is very interesting information, the way it's broken down. And I'll be curious to see what the public response will be to it, because I'm sure everyone will be.
They will respond.
Me, too. Yes. They're usually not quiet. All right. Thank you.
Rocky, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, move to the consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Do I second?
Second.
But motion is second. Is there any further questions or discussion? If not, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we go to our action items. Action item A is annual investment policy review, approval of resolution and authorization of investment brokers for the district. I think I got that all out, right? Yes. Dean Edgar, Chief Financial Officer.
So the Public Funds Investment Act, PFIA, it's in the government code. It governs the rules and regulations regarding the district's investments of funds. The district is required to invest funds in accordance with PFIA and provide guidance to potential investors with respect to the types and amounts of allowable instruments. The board is required annually to review the district investment policy and approve a resolution regarding the review of the policy. The district is not recommending any changes to the current investment policy at this time. PFIA also requires the district to annually obtain board approval of authorized investment brokers. Now, this is new. We haven't used investment brokers previously. Quotes will be taken from a minimum of three brokers prior to purchasing investments. The district included a list of brokers and dealers in the board packet for review and approval. And are there any questions on this?
I move to approve the resolution regarding annual investment policy review and the list of authorized brokers as presented. Do I second? Motion is second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we do the, oh, that's right, we pulled that one out. Consider the approval of requests for quotation, RFQ for furniture fixtures and equipment for Colony 81221 and Mina Elementary sites.
Proposals were presented on October 18th, 2022, for FFNE, or Furniture, Fixer and Equipment, for the two new elementaries and Mina Elementary. Three firms submitted responses to the RFQ, and they were School Specialty, Worthington Contract Furniture, and Systems Office Furniture. The Rubik scores were included in your board packet, and the highest scoring vendor was Worthington. We are recommending awarding the contract for these three sites to Worthington at this time. Are there any questions?
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to award the contract for the furniture fixtures and equipment for the Colony 81221 and Mina Elementary sites to Worthington Contract Furniture as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
This motion is second. Any further discussion? If not, a call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, we're going to get to hear from Dean Edgar again.
Okay.
And consider the approval of increase to transportation compensation.
Yes, sir. So the district continues to navigate a shortage of bus drivers, which has negatively impacted the routes, causing rerouting, late arrivals, attendance issues, overcrowding, long routes, and in some instances, temporary cancellations. The district's current bus driver wages are among the lowest when compared to our competitors. So in efforts to attract and retain school bus drivers, we are recommending an increase in driver compensation from 1925 per hour to $22 per hour, and an increase in bus monitor pay from 1050 to 1281 per hour. The impact to the '22, '23 general fund budget will be approximately $300,000, and this is based on a fully staffed transportation department. I would like to acknowledge that Derek Hay, our area manager, and JW, our new district general manager, are here this evening. And are there any questions on this item?
So they, by saying it's a full, we will have all bus drivers that we need, basically, with that raise.
We hope to attract bus drivers with this. We will be competitive with this rate.
Yes.
So we should have more success.
Does this apply to current employees also?
Yes, it does.
To this rate? Okay.
When is this going to affect?
So we are working with Gold Star to try and get a December start date. Of course, it's up to their payroll team, but as soon as possible for us.
I need some drivers.
And are we making up part of this additional budget hit from not having those drivers?
With the savings that we, that we've currently experienced, correct?
I move to approve the increase to the transportation compensation plan as presented.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dean Edgar. Next, we have to consider the adoption of a resolution for the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program with Bassdrop ISD Police Department. Chief Scott Punch, welcome.
President Moore, Mr. Edwards, forward. Thank you. What I'm asking you to adopt today is a resolution that we, what we do is we partner with the Department of Justice for a Patrick Leahy grant for bulletproof vests. And so what they do is they'll fund a portion of our vests that we purchase for our officers. So that's what this resolution is.
The shelf, these vests roughly? Not these, but just in general?
The shelf life for a vest is typically five years. But again, it depends, so the vest depends on how much wear you get out of it. If you're out in the sun a lot with perspiration and all, they'll break down quicker. But our vest should last anywhere between five and eight years.
And chief, there are matching funds that we match the funds through our budget?
This, this grant doesn't provide anywhere close to what we pay for our vest. Our vests that we purchase for these officers are around eighteen hundred dollars per vest. They're fitted to the officer, and so the grant pays for one vest, is what it will pay for.
Well, I move to approve the resolution for the Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program in Bastrop ISD as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, chief. Now we consider resignation without good cause and proposed complaint in the State Board of Educators Certification for abandonment of contract. Ms. Penate Leifer, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Moore, Board of Trustees, Mr. Edwards. I really wish I was here to provide you with a riveting HR department update, but unfortunately, that's not the case. I'm here for you to consider an employee's resignation without good cause and reporting that to ESPEC. We had a teacher at Bastrop Middle School by the name of Morgan Worley, dance teacher, started with us on August the eighth with a probationary contract. Her last day of service on campus was October the nineteenth. She provided us with a resignation on September the twenty-ninth, stating it was for health reasons. So on that same date, the HR department reached out to her to try to obtain her medical certification to show proof of the health issue. No response. Tried again on October the fourth, no response. October the sixth, no response. Communicated with the principal to make sure this teacher was getting emails, that was confirmed she was. Her last day on campus was October nineteenth, and we've never heard from her. So I would appreciate recommending the board approve the recommendation of the superintendent as presented.
I move that the board accept the recommendation of the superintendent and that the board makes a finding that good cause do not exist under Texas Education Code, section twenty-one point two-ten, for the resignation of term and/or probationary, probationary contract as indicated for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year for Morgan Worley Probationary Contract, BMS. The administration and board did not consent to her resignation. Morgan Worley has failed to perform her contract. The board authorizes the superintendent to file a complaint with the State Board for Educators Certification to seek sanctions for the abandonment of her contract.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion, questions? If not, we'll take call, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Now we're going to consider approval of names for two new elementary schools. Dr. Lee.
Yes, hello once again. Well, I am so pleased to come before you to talk about naming our two new schools. You approved a policy back in August of this year. This policy gives the board sole authority for naming schools and other facilities. As a reminder, our schools could be named for an historical or geographic site or community, a local, state, or national historical event or place, a significant national figure, a local, state, or national figure, someone who's made a significant contribution to education in BISD, or a subdivision where the school is located. So these are our current names, and as you can, can tell, we have had a practice of naming our schools after the town where they're located, like Cedar Creek High School, or Red Rock Elementary School. Or they're named for a particular geographic feature such as Lost Pines Elementary, or the Colorado River Collegiate Academy. The policy that you approved provides for a process for naming a new school. So first, BISD sought nominations from the public, and we received them from employees, parents, community members. The nomination period was publicized in family and staff newsletters, on our website, and on social media. We received about sixty nominations, some of those being duplicates. Second, a committee was put together, made up of individuals appointed by all of you, as well as teacher representatives, and we met to consider those nominations. The policy that you approved also includes a mechanism for conflict of interest, and there was no conflict of interest presented by any of the members of that team. The committee was very impressed at both the number of nominations received, and I think everybody really enjoyed reviewing them, and we all learned a lot in the process. It's kind of a little history lesson in some cases. So for the, for the school at six oh one Sam Houston Drive in the Colony, the committee had a clear choice. The nomination said, "Bastrop is beautiful, and we should honor the landscape that makes it so unique and special. The new elementary school will be located in the Colony subdivision, surrounded by post oak trees. Oak trees are known for their long lifespans and roots, which are considered symbols of longevity. A single oak can live for centuries and only reaches full maturity after living seven hundred years. Additionally, during autumn, it is one of the last trees to shed its leaves, and this behavior, along with the sturdiness of its trunk and branches, has come to make it represent strength and power." So with that being said, I bring to you a recommendation for the school on Sam Houston Drive in the Colony in Bastrop to be Colony Oaks Elementary School. For, let's see, for the school at sixty-three eighty FM eight twelve, at the corner of eight twelve and Highway twenty-one, we had a near tie between two names. So one choice reflects the nearby community of Dale. The school address is Dale, Texas, but the town itself is approximately twelve miles from the school location. The nomination said, "Dale used to be such a small town, and now it has been growing each and every year. And now I believe having a school named Dale will make it more special and more known." It is important to note that the, as I said, the committee had a near tie with these two names. However, after the committee met, they learned some new information, and that was shared with the committee from residents in the area, that they consider Dale to be a part of Lockhart. And technically, the community of Dale is in the Lockhart ISD boundaries, not in the BISD boundary. So I wanted to be sure to share that with you. The other choice reflects historical significance to our state and region. The Camino Real dates back to the seventeenth century and is also known as King's Highway. It was a royal road with special status developed to counter French intrusion. Now, not every route used by the Spanish met the requirements for designation as a Camino Real. Caminos Rallos were routes that connected economically important Spanish towns, capitals, and mining areas, and giving them royal privileges. So those who had business with the crown used the King's Highway. So portions of Highway twenty-one are designated El Camino Real, including in Bastrop County. So you have your recommendations for the eight, twelve, twenty-one school as Dale Elementary or Camino Real Elementary. So tonight, I've given you recommendations for two schools, Colony Oaks Elementary School and either Dale or Camino Real Elementary School.
A motion at this time, but we're going to be taking the schools separately on the motions. Separately.
Okay. I move to approve the name of the school located at six oh one Sam Houston Drive in the Colony as Colony Oaks Elementary.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? If not, a call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now I'll take the, the second motion for the other school name.
Out of respect for Dale, Texas, I think we ought to save that name for them, for a future elementary. And I move to name the school located at six, six thousand three hundred and eighty FM eight twelve as Camino Real Elementary School as presented.
Second.
We have motion is second, any further discussion? Not, a call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yay!
Agreed. Those write-ups did contain, some of them contained a lot of information.
First process of naming schools with committees and all that?
Yes.
Awesome. We did, did a great job.
Yes, it did.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Now we move to our information items. The Board of Trustees calendar of events is information only, enrollment information only, single budget purchases more than fifty thousand dollars are information only. Is there any objections to adjourning this meeting at this time? If not, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.